Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
First two of all three.
Yeah.
That is.
All right. So, do we have a motion for the thirtieth, the sixth? For minutes?
I move. Second.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Aye. And then, a motion for the November ninth meeting?
So, second.
Mr. President?
Yep.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Okay. There's that. Meetings. Morning, Glenn.
Morning, howdy, all. The first one is the, um... Installing a gas line from the main road up to DES. Um, he's working on planning with Perry, Perry and CEI. When that unit, that's an all-electric building, so if we ever have to replace it, we're gonna put it to natural gas. Also, we've got two generators on site down there, one's for the tower and one's for the building. What we're looking at is trying to condensate those. We have the one that's approximately eighteen years old.
So, those are both diesel, right?
Correct. Those are both diesel. So, what we're looking at is can we legally with Perry and us go to one generator for the tower and the building and bring it down to one and then go with natural gas on that? That's not happening right away. That's being looked at. And when, when the equipment goes out, then we, we have that other option of going with natural gas.
So, can you still go back to diesel just in case the gas line had an issue or can you, can you go back and forth or no?
I have to look into that.
Yeah. I mean, just to keep your options open.
Well, your portable one is here, is that diesel?
Yes.
Okay.
So, they can put a transfer switch in and you can go back and forth.
We can pull our portable up there and do it.
Okay.
Something was to happen there, so we have three portables within the home.
Okay.
Just so last, yesterday, we had a major problem with the safety center generator. Um, it didn't transfer properly.
Like, it's reset?
Yeah. So, during the, uh...
Weekly test?
Weekly test, it didn't transfer, so we had a manual to do it. We brought in them. Something's messed up with the transfer switch right now. Uh, what's going on, it will transfer to the generator, but it will not transfer back.
Like, when the power comes back?
Correct. When the power comes back. So, we have to go in, so we're on standby.
That's our biggest generator, isn't it? That's a big catapult, diesel.
So, we have to go in and we'll have to do the manual switch right away. So, they've been instructed, they are aware of the situation. Uh, as soon as we go in the generator, you need to call us right away so that we can get in. As soon as we go back to city, we'll do it manually. The texts are coming out today and we'll try to get that fixed. So, that's what happened yesterday.
So, what was the impetus? I mean, we're not gonna be using the gas line, we're putting it into DES.
Not right now, no.
And so, what's the impetus to putting it in ahead when you're needing it?
Uh, we're just trying to plan ahead. Um, Perry said, yes, they'll pay for it, they have the money. We're not paying for that.
And we can split that and use that for both the water department and...
Although, yes. They'll probably bring another line in if, if the water department needs it. I don't know if the water department already has gas down there.
But already have gas down there.
I think that is the answer.
Yeah, I thought everybody had gas down there.
Yeah.
Great. Thanks. Thank you. Second.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just a moment.
Aye. Thanks. Okay. Next.
What do you have for number four?
Number...
Number five, aye.
Five. Number five is the courthouse again, uh, the first floor. Uh, that money's coming out of side crane money. Uh, that money is set up for the court renovation and any improvements within the court.
Thanks for getting, uh, flow of that funding for, for this project. Do we have a motion?
So, second.
Mr. President?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. President?
Yes.
So, we're gonna take care of that over the Thanksgiving holiday?
Yes. Um, the courts are shutting down at noon on Wednesday. While we get in there, we're gonna do all the plastic, we protect everything, get everything moved so that they can start getting up in there and tearing down and the whole works.
Danny, did you have a question?
Yeah. I wonder if I could get a spelling on the name of the fund?
Cyprae. Cyprae. Hit the Google, Cyprae, it's a Latin term.
I have no idea what it means.
Joe, Corville, Joe, you know Latin, don't you?
No, I can explain what it is.
Technically, the name's just courthouse donation fund, right?
Yeah, but it's, Cyprae, it's, it's... This was, there was a class action suit that was held in John's courthouse. It was with an insurance company that had somehow overcharged many, many, many clients. And so, there's a multi-billion dollar settlement. There's a case where, when they can't find all the individual people who were charged, they take the money, they can't really get back to the people who were wrong, they put it in the fund and then decisions are made, worthy causes receive that money. So, given the, given the state of our courthouse, it was a decision made, I think it was like four hundred and thirty thousand dollars was part of how that money was divvying up, it was earmarked to go for improvements in the courthouse.
Anybody have a clue whether Latin, cy, starts with a C?
Are you talking like...
C-Y. I think it's C-Y-P-R-E-S.
Are you talking like Cyprae as in like doctrine? It's C-Y hyphen P-R-E-S, but the E has the...
Accent over?
The accent.
But the important point here is...
And it's actually French.
That fund, that fund is, that fund is set up specifically for courthouse.
C-Y.
So, the money, the money is not coming out of there.
P-R-E-S.
Not general fund.
And the E has the little accent.
Oh, okay.
And can only be used for that specific...
And that's why it's pronounced Cyprae.
So, it's good. Icras, yeah. We kind of step, step back and take a look at it, 'cause now the, the, the funding is being, coming from the appropriate place. It's the fund that took, set up to take care of the courts, not out of general.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Appreciate it, thanks. Adrian's gotta get to a meeting here.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you, Glenn.
Yes.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Um, today's financials include an appropriations transfer to the sheriff's office for the web check fees deposited into the general fund and an appropriations transfer from the general fund contingency to cover your end wellness incentives or set up. Uh, the cash transfers from the commissioner's office to the Department of Development, Community Development Fund for their second and third quarter payroll administration costs. A couple of travel requests from Common Pleas Court to attend the Ohio Common Pleas Judges Association Winter Conference. And vouchers include five thousand three eighty, seven thirty from the commissioner's office to Richard Albona Associates for the feasibility analysis services and seven thousand seven hundred and ninety from the commissioner's office to Dinsmore and Shoal LLP per the release of all claims and in settlement for billing issues related to representation for the juvenile probate court.
So, move. Second.
Mr. President?
Yes. Thank you.
Just as an example, I've asked Adrian to look into the tax hit we're gonna take because of the Lickwood's losing their property. Um, if you've heard the news on that, it's between being purchased by the parks. And so, we'll, we'll be losing the tax income associated with that in addition to the sales tax issue with that, plus we'll pay more because of our, for the maintenance costs that's going on. So, that's a great healthy chunk of tax that we're gonna lose as a result of that.
I'll let you know and stay responsive to that.
Morning.
Item seven on the agenda is asking the board to approve and execute the final change order for the asphalt surfacing of the Leggett Road. It increased the contract by an amount of fourteen thousand dollars and that was just due to the amount of repairs. We did a couple extra repairs in there, um, once we got a good look at it and then, it was about nine thousand dollars in overging repairs, so...
Mr. President?
Yes.
We're done with asphalt repairs now, aren't we?
Asphalt plans are all basically in Jog County. Shalersville shut down last Friday, or, sorry, Clerton shut down last Friday and Shalersville is actually probably shut down now, but they were planning to shut down. The ones that usually feed us were shutting down today. So, but we, we as a county are done with all of our asphalt. Item eight on the agenda is requesting the board authorize, Mr. President, to execute the OPWC disbursement certification in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars for the Haskin Road Bridge replacement project in Danbridge Township.
Second.
Mr. President? Mr. President?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Yep. Enjoy.
Morning.
Good morning, how are you?
Good, good, good.
So, I'm here today with a memorandum of understanding between our agency and Family Pride, our mental health organization. Um, we entered into a grant together, an application to try to see if their professionals that do case management could offer a solution to some of our issues that we're seeing with our seniors and the adult protective services is having. So, the United Way actually is able to find for two years a case, senior support, case manager employed by Family Pride to work with our agency to help seniors who have complex needs, so people with housing issues, financial issues, a lot of complex cases that they can meet with them multiple times, take them to interviews, help them process applications above and beyond what we can do. So, um, it'll, not our employee, but, um, they will be at our location in an office. Um, the one thing with the MOU that is just slightly not typical is regarding their liability insurance remains the same, I believe it's one million per incident, but their property insurance instead of one million, it is three hundred thousand. That was their insurance coverage as a nonprofit and the individual is only in an office using a computer. So, Laura was fine with it as long as you were okay with them having a three hundred thousand property damage insurance.
Now, that's not the only problem. So, do we have a motion?
So, move. Second.
Mr. President? Mr. President?
Hi. No, thank you. Water Resources. I thought last week was your last week.
It was, Director, I'm here as sanitary engineer.
Oh.
Steve started yesterday. Steve did start yesterday. He had a, he had a pre-arranged appointment this morning, say.
Okay.
And I figured this was an easy one, so... So, this is just an amendment to the two-way plan for Chesterland in the Littleville subdivision. The lots at the end of the cul-de-sac were, were there before the sewer, the subdivision went in. They were never tied in. One got tied in a couple of years ago. This is now, these people are having issues with their subject systems and they're not tying into the sewer system, so. Just amending the two-way plan to take the property from the, from onsite only to maybe sewer.
Okay. So, do we have a motion?
So, second.
Mr. President?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. President?
Aye.
The, uh, so, the, um, the new department director, did he start?
Yeah, he started yesterday.
Yesterday.
Yeah, he had a pre, pre, did your previous, you know...
Something to do today?
Appointment this morning.
Okay.
Yeah. Pre-arranged. Arranged, I don't know why arranged wouldn't come in on up, but that was... Jerry spent most of the day with him, the more he said at the end, have I seen everything yet? And what'd you say?
And I said, oh, God, no.
Not even close.
Yeah.
He was very happy to be here.
Yeah, he should be. I think he'll...
Yeah, we immediately got... Him and Glenn were having good conversations together, you know. Yeah, they're already gonna be doing one of these.
Oh, good.
Oh, yeah.
I thought he got my McCarlin plant in the lab and the garage at the end of the day. He immediately, you know, good rapport with everybody. Good. Yeah, he's in, he'll be good now, for sure.
Yep. All right. Thank you, Jerry.
Yes, sir.
Is there anything else that you had, Dave?
No. Nothing specific. We had some, you know, some discussions about, you know, some of the reaction to the, to the press release from last week. I don't know if you guys want to talk about that or...
Right. Um, yeah, I mean, you know, I think it was good, the message was received, you know, on the feasibility study and, and that the commissioners are committed to, um, moving forward and, and whatever that is gonna look like, we still don't know yet, but, um, you know, I think there was some, maybe some, you know, and it's typical of any time you talk about change, there was some, you know, either misconceptions or, or things thrown out there that the county was looking at moving out of Chardon, which we all know that's just not what is gonna happen, or are we looking to do that? And also that we're looking to expand and grow government, that's, that is the opposite of the, the goal of this project is, you know, is to consolidate and be more cost-effective and efficient.
Right.
Um, you know, not only with our employees, but for the residents of this county. So, you know, I think moving forward, you know, I was gonna, you know, talk to you two and see your thoughts as far as continuing to, um, you know, put the information out, educate the public and the other elected officials to, um, exactly what we're trying to do instead of, you know, a lot of the Facebook kind of education and back and forth and...
I mean, there's some simple things, like, you know, you saw, oh, oh, taxes are going up.
Yeah.
You know they're up, right? I mean, that's, I think that's pretty clear.
Yeah, there's, you know, and that it's gonna be the death of business and Jog County and, and death of Chardon and death of the square, which, you know, we, we actually have been working very closely with the actual mayor of Chardon, who's been very helpful and insightful in this transition, transition and, um, you know, I know there's some other individuals that, in Chardon that don't see it the same way, but their, their mayor has been very helpful. And, um, so we're working closely with him and, um, but, yeah, I mean, I think, you know, it, you know, to continue to tell this story and, and let people know exactly, you know, where we are and where, the way I see it is we're on, there's two paths here.
Right.
If we continue to go down the same path and kick the can, um, you know, the frequency of this court example is just gonna, uh, continue to grow and those dollar amounts are gonna continue to grow.
Right.
Or we pump the brakes and get off and get onto another path here and say, look, let's talk about the future moving forward in Jog County. How are we gonna be, um, so we can control our destiny, you know?
Exactly.
And, and control, 'cause right now, we're just waiting for the next, um, bomb to drop, per se. You know, we're waiting for one of these generators to go, waiting for one of these thirty-year-old air conditioning units that you can't get parts to go. So, it's just kinda like wait-and-see approach.
You're just reacting.
Yeah.
You're just continually reacting.
So, um, but I would, I would urge that maybe we, um, continue to address the public with, um, you know, some type of informational pieces, you know, something where we put out, um, you know, very concise, um, information as to what we're planning on doing, you know, we're not looking at raising taxes, we're not looking at growing government, we're not trying to move out of Chardon, you know, the, kind of the basics, but at the same time, educating them and showing them what we have to deal with currently and then maybe a vision of where we'd like to go.
Right.
You know?
Yeah, yeah.
Because, I mean, us in this room just talking about it and no, no offense to the papers, you know, it just doesn't reach out to the masses, you know? We gotta somehow maybe be more forthright in a campaign almost of putting that message out.
Yeah, it's, the average person is busy doing their own job.
Right.
The example I always use is in two thousand and three, before I was even knew I'd be working for the county, I'm reading about the new safety center. My first reaction as a conservative person, why do they need a new safety center? Why do they waste their money on, I mean, that's your, that's your gut reaction and I get that.
Right.
So, until you're kind of exposed to the inside, you can see some of the, you know, behind the scenes, the operating costs, the other challenges, legal requirements or whatever, you just don't know. So, that's part of it.
Well, and I think too that, you know, the whole, you know, the social media thing, you know, you have people that, um, they like to do that, whether they're bored, they don't have jobs or whatever their agenda is, that they have a lot more time than, you know, than they probably should have. They try to, you know, cause a stir and, you know, you're never gonna get away from that. That's, that's how some people are, are designed and I don't care if you told them that you were bringing the cure for cancer, you know, to, to Chardon Square, there would be people that would be opposed to that. So, it's just, it's a, it's a constant battle, but I agree with Tim a hundred percent, you know, I think that, we had one time talked about the newsletter piece, you know, and I think that, um, you know, it's a, I think that that's still a valid, um, you know, valid thing for us to do, possibly looking at doing something social media-wise for our own office here, but, um, you know, you're just never gonna get away from people that are going to be negative and they don't look at the positives, they focus on the negatives and that's why there, a lot of them are in positions there, because they don't wanna do anything to better themselves. So, they constantly try to bring, you know, grief to everybody else and, um, but at the end of the day, I think that, you know, we have been, we have been so, um, you know, transparent in this whole process and, you know, I, I just, um, you know, we've included Chardon in this, we've included, um, the courts and we've included pretty much every department head. We've held a public meeting with all the department heads. We've done, you know, there, we have not met with Bowen. The only time we have met with Bowen was while we were doing the interviews, you know, actually, even when we were doing interviews for the consultants, we did that, we did, we did that in public. So, there has never really been a time...
Right.
Other than if you make a phone call to ask him a question about something that you've got.
As an individual, yeah.
We have not been in one hundred percent a public, you know, environment and, um, you know, I don't think that in, in a, like, in, in, in a lot of the business, business world of, you know, not that there's really anything really that we are hiding here or in the business world, but, you know, it's something that, you know, we should be entrusted to be able to make good decisions, but we're taking it above and beyond that to be able to include everybody. And we've never, um, never done anything to try to, try to pull the wool over anybody's eyes. It's been one hundred percent, our, just, just our budget hearings alone, that we, we have made public in their public meetings and for people to see what we pay for our maintenance is atrocious because of the dilapidation in a lot of these buildings. And, you know, fortunately for, you know, for us with Glenn and he's done a good job trying to do some preventive maintenance, but it's, we're running situations like we're running into Thanksgiving here, you know?
Yeah.
Fifty thousand dollars almost are spending and it's a lot of money when you start to look at it that could be going to get something better and more efficient, more secure, doesn't need maybe as many people to be able to maintain it, to run it, everything. So, it's good, you know, something, we just gotta keep, uh, best foot forward here, but I agree with Tim. I think that having some type of a notification process to be able to get, get ahead of it and get, you know, to, 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 to explain exactly what the message is, rather than being contorted, let's put the truth out there and set the record straight.
Exactly. Yep. This is such a positive thing, or has the potential to be such a positive thing for Chardon.
Yeah.
And I don't know what some people's agenda are, they just wanna snipe and, and, but think about this for a second. We got an eighteen nineties courthouse, we're putting forty-two thousand dollars into it and it's still an eighteen nineties. It's like putting, trying to put a, a modern engine in a, in a Model T-four and it'll always be a Model T-four. We're never gonna be able to change what we've got there. We've gotta move into the future and set the stage for it and we've said this through this whole thing. We've gotta set the stage, not for today, but for twenty, thirty, forty years in the future, fifty years into the future. So, we're looking out for the future and not necessarily for today and, you know, I, I got pictures of what's in the ceiling over there. We're gonna put forty-two thousand dollars in this building. I'm still concerned over the, the safety of the people and the quality of, uh, the workplace and all that kinda stuff. So, I'm, I'm in full support of, um, in my limited time here, in putting out a, uh, putting together a, a public communication strategy. Uh, I did reach out to Bowen independently. I was hearing some, I don't do Facebook, um, and pay attention to that, that nonsense that you see out on Twitter and Facebook, but, um, I did get people calling me, but you guys, but citizens call me.
Right, yep.
And so, I had some people call me yesterday, which motivated me to call Bowen to ask the question, hey, um, can we put together some visionary pieces? Can we show where we're going? Can we have some diagrams of the possibilities and compare that to what we currently have? And their answer was yes, and they also have connections with PR firms, if you wanted to engage a PR firm, uh, to specifically communicate where we're going. It's not to put a lot of fluff puff stuff out there, but just to communicate the, uh, the honest or the transparency of where we're trying to get to. And I think if the average public knew what we were trying to get to, they'd all be excited.
Yeah.
Um, 'cause overall, services are gonna be improved, our security's gonna be improved, the wall, the, the work quality is gonna improve. And by the way, the downtown area can really improve greatly, I think, the business environment down, because when the government shuts down, there's nothing going on downtown in the square.
No.
You put some good businesses in down there with some living spaces, but I was, I was looking out the other day, I was at the courthouse when I was looking up into the ceiling and stuff, and I was just standing, looking at the little bit of space that we've got there in that one, um, corner of the downtown area and envisioning that to be, you know, condos up above and restaurants down below and a vital, you know, environment, twenty-four hours. I think there's a lot of great potential for Chardon. Uh, Jeff Smock has been great, the mayor, you know, we keep saying the mayor, the jet, the mayor is Jeff Smock and he's, he's come to the tables, come to our meetings, uh, he's been a very positive influence in this whole thing, willing to work with us. That's refreshing, actually.
Yeah.
And so, I think we got everything lined up to, to, taken in a very positive direction and we just gotta make sure that we stay positive and that they'll pay attention to the naysayers who are just sniping for their political agenda, whatever that happens. Anyway, I'm full on board with creating a communication strategy of some kind. We probably shouldn't one-off it, is my thought. We oughta probably sit down and kinda think through a strategy, a communication strategy where we're doing it methodically and, you know, with specific intent and what we're communicating and so forth.
Sure.
But, um, Dave drafted a, a letter that I looked at this morning. It's a good starting point, a little, little, needs a little work, but it did some of the high points, the stuff that Tim mentioned in terms of not, you know, we're not moving out of the square to, to, uh, rip the downtown area, we're gonna help to transition that. We're not gonna raise taxes, that's the intent anyway. Um, you know, all those things that, that people have questions on, that just aren't true, so, anyway, I, I think it could be a very positive thing. So, I'm on board with that. I don't know how we get there, Dave, but you can help us with that maybe. Jerry, Jerry and I will come up with some recommendations for you.
Okay. That'd be great, yeah. Maybe reach out to Bowen and...
The other thing I wanna do with, with Jerry is come up with a timeline, an estimated timeline for what's remaining of Bowen and then talk about timelines for scheduling, okay, going forward, how much time do we have to allow for, like, looking at architects?
Absolutely.
You know, so, because we have to start figuring realistically.
Yeah.
If, if part of what we're looking at is time we have to vacate, say, the JFS building...
Right.
We need a realistic basis, okay, these are the things we're gonna have to get done before we get to that.
Absolutely.
How much time do we really need?
Those are real deadlines.
And then that gives us something to really, you know, stay on track with.
Exactly, yeah. Exactly, yeah, and I've been saying that from the beginning, I think, you know, especially, you know, if this comes closer with U H and we're coming to some type of agreement there, um, we're absolutely, the clock's gonna start ticking and we must make a move, you know?
So we need, we need a realistic schedule that we can all pay attention to.
Yeah, yeah. No, that would be great, if you, if you could reach out to Bowen and, you know, I, I would imagine a firm that size, and we, this isn't their first rodeo, they've built courthouses and things more complex than what we're talking about. Maybe seeing what they have in the system there to help us communicate.
Yeah, they, I mean, they, they don't seem to do it themselves, but they certainly have experience with a lot of people that have. I mean, look, look at what Burke should do in the Prime Initiative, you know?
Exactly, that's a very.
Very effective messaging.
Yep, yep.
Well, and in, in my preliminary investigation, I reached out to a company in Strongsville that, that deals with historic buildings. Because it was always gonna be a question, what do we do with the courthouse? And so, uh, there's, there are organizations out there that that's what they do. They know how to deal with these, you know, what the options are to, um, to handle that situation. We've got kind of a unique situation because of the deed restriction in our deed. I'd still be interested in finding out what that deed restriction says specifically and get a legal read on that. But, um, I talked to Bowen and asked them if they had those sorts of things in their, in their quiver, and they do. They have companies that they can talk to who are used to dealing with historic buildings. Okay, so what do you do with them now? You know, we have all, all kinds of options, we oughta start looking at some of those options, so.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
So, um, it's, uh, Turkey Day, Thursday, happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Sure, your holiday.
And, um, then we've got, um, Friday, Dave Blair closed all the offices.
I wish I could take credit, you know, that's thinking.
I'd really like to.
Yeah.
If you wanna blame me for it, that's fine.
Yeah, that's right, that's fine. We could be like the, uh, the Grinch and, or, uh, have everybody come into work.
And we'll see you guys on Tuesday.
Yep.
Everybody have a safe weekend, good travels and, uh, don't eat too much.
Right. Department of Aging is looking for people to help them deliver turkeys on, on Thanksgiving to, uh, Chardon, so if anybody's interested.
I'll be spending time with my in-laws.
Uh-oh.
Uh-uh. Well, have fun.
Great.
So you'd rather be delivering turkeys, what you telling us?
They'd rather be delivering turkeys, yeah.
I can drink when I'm having Thanksgiving with my in-law, I probably can't drink anymore.
Looking at that from the other perspective, I am the in-laws, so I get all my kids in.